...the business open. However, the applicant shall file a performance guarantee in accordance with Section 1720.120 and shall pave the parking area and driveway lane no later than May 15, 2018. So if that, if those are the two conditions that the council imposes, then a revised site plan would need to be submitted to the city but would not necessarily need to come back to the city council as long as that revised site plan meets those two conditions of approval.
Okay, all right. That's satisfied?
Yeah.
All right. I mean, if it leads to more questions, go ahead. We've got a motion on the floor and a second to approve the application with conditions adopting modifications to the draft order. You ready for a vote?
One more question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
What happens on May 15th or whatever the day is in May of next year?
On May 16th.
Yes.
If it's not paved, that's why we have a performance guarantee. And the preferred guarantee from the city's point of view would be for the Public Works Department to work up an estimate of what that paving would cost and for the applicant to give us a certified check that we'll stick in a drawer and pull out on, and on May 16th we either return the check to the applicant or we go to the bank and hire a paving company.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Ready for a vote? Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Ustleman?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
No.
Motion passes three to one.
Three to one. Okay. And that takes care of that for a while.
And we will return with a modified order.
On the 18th?
On the 18th for the council's ratification.
Okay. And we're going to be in recess for five minutes. I need a break and maybe some of you do too. And I guess everyone knows by now that that decision of ours can be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals in accordance with state law. Here we go. Rich?
No.
Here we go. Moshi moshi, as they say. Okay, the next thing is, and I've got a two on this one. We've got another public hearing regarding application for housing rehab funds. And I have to, a script on this one too, so here we go. City of Stateon, 2017 Community Development Block Grant. The city of Stateon is considering the submission of an application for a 2017 Community Development Block Grant from Business Oregon. Under consideration is an application for a housing rehabilitation grant program to serve low and moderate income persons who own their own dwelling structure in Stateon, Mount Angel, Almsville, Turner, and unincorporated Marion County, Oregon. The purpose of this hearing is for the city council to obtain citizen views and to respond to questions and comments about community development and housing needs, especially the needs of low and moderate income persons, as well as other needs in the community that might be assisted with a community development block grant project and the proposed project. Before opening the public hearing, we'll receive a staff report and after the staff report, I will open the public hearing. So, Dan?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Community Development Block Grants are provided by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development to states for disbursement to units of local government for the purposes of assisting low and moderate income households and meeting what are called urgent needs. Cities larger than 50,000 people in population receive their CDBG funds directly from the federal government. Smaller communities like Stateon may apply for funding to this, from the state programs. In Oregon, the CDBG program is administered by the Infrastructure Finance Authority, which is part of the Oregon Business Development Department, also known as Business Oregon. Stateon has had a CDBG financed housing rehabilitation program for about 15 years. The program provides low interest loans to qualified households for home improvements and repairs. As loans are repaid, the funds are available for relending. The original grant that the city received in 2002 financed 12 loans and has since provided assistance to more than 20 households as the money has been repaid and lent out again. The city contracts with Valley Development Initiatives for the administration of the program. VDI is a 501(c)(3) tax exempt organization that was established by the Mid-Wilamette Valley Council of Governments to administer economic development and housing rehabilitation programs in the three county area served by the COG. VDI administers the housing rehab program for Stateon, 10 other cities, and Marion County. They set up a partnership program where representatives from the various cities meet, we were meeting on a semi-annual basis, but it's probably down to just about one time a year just to get updates on the status of the various programs around the region. Under the terms of our previous CDBG grant, as I said, loans are made to homeowners, a lien is placed on the property to secure the loan, and the loan is not repaid, there is no payment on the loan until the property is sold or ownership is transferred.
Is that through inheritance?
Excuse me?
Would that be through inheritance as well?
Yeah, I assume so. I mean, if, yes, if the owner passes away, then, then I'm, probably the loan needs to be repaid.
There'll be a chance for questions. Hang on. Go ahead, Dan.
Owners of manufactured housing units who don't own the land on which the unit sits have not been eligible to participate since we cannot place a lien on the property. We can't lien a mobile home and they don't own the land. Recent changes in the rules for new grants would allow grants to these homeowners. And I've been working with representatives of the partners in VDI to put together a regional grant application to provide assistance to these residents who have been excluded from our previous programs. The state's CDBG program now requires that a housing rehabilitation grant application come in from a group of at least three local governments. So while in 2002, Stateon on its own received a grant, now these applications have to come in from a regional partnership. One local government is the lead applicant and bears the responsibility for grant administration. The lead applicant has to contract with a nonprofit for the management of the program. We've been working at a staff level and expect that the cities of Stateon, Almsville, Turner, and Mount Angel are all interested in putting together a grant application together with Marion County to cover residents in the unincorporated portions of the county to submit an application to the, to Business Oregon before the end of this month. Stateon, having the staff capacity far more than any of those other smaller communities, has expressed a willingness to be the lead applicant and that's why we've scheduled tonight's public hearing should the council be willing to, to carry this out. If we're successful, we expect that there'll be over 100,000, maybe as much as $115,000 available to qualified owners of manufactured housing units here in Stateon. I sent a letter out to the owners of all of the units in the three mobile home parks in the city to get letters of interest and sort of a pre-application form. And at this point, we have 24 people who have expressed interest and appear to be qualified to participate. So you've got in your packet the, the sort of pre-application project intake form that was submitted to Business Oregon as well as a draft of the participation agreement for the four cities. I believe it says Woodburn on here, it does, but Woodburn has since, is not going to be participating. I'm not quite sure whether that was their decision or, or the partnership's decision, but anyway, the purpose of tonight's public, tonight's public hearing is required prior to submitting the application and the purpose is to get input from the community about community development needs. And, and with that, I'll answer any of your questions and then be able to answer questions from the public should they have any.
Okay, thank you, Dan. I'm going to open the public hearing. If there's anyone that'd like to provide testimony regarding the proposed 2017 Community Development Block Grant, come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. I thought this was going to develop.
It's no fun.
More excitement than the last one, but it, I was wrong again.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. We get to counsel.
Anything? Okay. Oh, Mr. Cronquist.
Mr. Fleishman, you said you had 24 applicants, are those 24 mobile home applicants regarding your letter or 24 total applicants? Either one, it's great.
They are, they are all owners in the three, owners of units in the three mobile home parks in Stateon.
How many applicants can we take or help, do you know? Or is it, how is, how is the award, say we have $150,000, you know, it's great, I appreciate everything we're doing here, it's an awesome program. How do we award the grants among the 24 or say 48 or 150 people who finally apply?
It, it will end up being first come, first served among those who qualify. So at this point, we've sent out a questionnaire, we've given them a bunch of boxes to check about their household income and ask them how many people live in the household, when the time actually comes, should we be successful in receiving the grant and send out real applications to these people. They'll need to provide previous year's tax returns and act as if they were going to the bank.
Do this go to homeowners as well as mobile home park residents or are mobile home park residents first in line for some reason?
Because we already have funds available today for homeowners and the owners of mobile homes who do not own their land are not eligible for that program, this grant is envisioned to be just for, not just folks in a mobile home park. It could be you own the mobile home and it's, and you don't own the land, but it's not a park. But here in Stateon, I don't think, other than the parks, I don't think we have those situations. That's going to be more common out in the unincorporated Marion County. So in, in order to develop the waiting list, I sent a letter out, I think it was about 130 letters that went out. We've gotten about 30 responses, of which 24 look like they're eligible. One or two didn't check off the income box, so who knows? A few were not, would not be qualified as low and moderate income households, but at this point, I think we'll have 24. The grant will be, the maximum grant amount under this program is 400,000.
And what's our portion or is that our?
That, that portion is still under negotiation, but I'm looking at, and then there'll be grant administration and environmental review and blah, blah, blah. So it looks, there'll probably be about 300,000 available to, to grant to homeowners. And at this point, we're talking about 35% being reserved for Stateon, which would give us about 115, 120,000.
It's going to be about $4,000 if everyone qualifies.
Well, yeah, but, but probably we'll set a limit in the range of 10 or $15,000 per grant. That being the case, that would allow us to finance 10 to 12 individuals or households.
Dan?
Thank you.
The other communities involved in this, are there responses about the same as far as participation or do you know or do we care?
I, I don't know and, and we do care. We need, we need to develop a waiting list of at least 30 people that goes in with the application. So we've now got 24, so we only need to get six more from the other communities. And, and the less participation in the other communities, the more money there will be to serve the residents of Stateon.
All right. Mr. Mayor. Yes, please.
So Dan, once, if the block grant money is forthcoming, are we, are we subcontracting with a social service agency to do the intake and the, everything for that or is that going to be done by our city staff?
We will contract with Valley Development Initiative.
They will, Valley Development Initiative will be dealing the intake?
Yes, as they do now.
Right.
The way, the way it works.
Just like the, the stick built, how the program works?
Yeah. The way it works now is, is I'll get a phone call from an interested party, I'll ask them three questions. Do you own your own house? How many people live in your household?
You'll vet them and send them on.
What's your, what's your, was your, based on the answer to how many people, was your income less than X?
You answered me.
And then I send them on to the banker.
All right. Are we done?
Yep.
Hearing's now closed. Counsel deliberation. This is about just taking part in this program, right, Dan?
Well, it, it's not just taking part, we would be the lead applicant.
Okay.
I mean, that, that's the way it's set up now, at least. So should the council be willing, and that is the recommendation from staff, but I've given you the option to either participate but not serve as the lead applicant, which may mean that it doesn't happen because I don't think any of the other communities will do it, or to choose not to participate.
Okay, well, there, there it is on page two of your, of your staff report. Following options, serve as the lead applicant and authorize execution of the participation agreement, participate in the regional grant program but not serve as the lead applicant or choose not to participate. You've got three choices here tonight.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we serve as the lead applicant and authorize execution of the participation agreement.
Second. So that's option one. Was there a second? A motion and a second to take part in this and to serve as the lead applicant and sign the participation agreement. Are there any other questions? Alyssa, poll a group, would you please?
Sure. Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Ustleman?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Four to zero. Thank you, everybody. And that's, that's number two. Number three, a public hearing is continuation of proposed resolution initiating annexation and comprehensive plan amendment. And of course, there's a script on that. Here we go. Good evening. Again, I'm Hank Porter and as mayor, I'll be presiding over this hearing. This is a continuation of the public hearing in the matter of land use file number 7-08-17, concurrent applications for annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, and zoning map amendment by the city of Stateon. The properties are located on Kendall Way. The hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement be made to those in attendance that covers certain matters relative to this case. That statement with all the information to be presented under ORS 197.763 bracket five is printed and available at the back counter. If you have not yet received one of these, you should go get one and review it prior to presenting your testimony. If anyone has questions regarding anything on the statement or objects to it not being read out loud, please raise those questions when it comes your turn to speak during the hearing. Also at the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meetings, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during public hearings. Council's Rules of Procedure for Land Use Public Hearings brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I'd ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case. And I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. And I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party conduct, or bias by any member of this body? I hear none. We're now ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleishman.
Good, thank you.
Busy evening.
So, yes, I'm back. You, you may recall that two weeks ago, we started this public hearing. At that time, there was testimony presented indicating that the, the record did not include the necessary analysis under the state's transportation planning rule and also that's required for a comprehensive plan map and a zoning map amendment and also that contrary to the requirements in our code for an annexation, since this was not, this application was not accompanied by a concurrent development application, there was no concept plan of what might happen there. So in your packet for tonight's meeting is a memo from Kittleson and Associates, which is the city's transportation planning consultant that goes through the necessary transportation planning rule analysis. The, the transportation planning rule requires that prior to a city or county changing a comprehensive plan amendment or a zone map, that we, we do an analysis of what is the, what is the potential impact on our transportation system from, from what, I don't know whether it's in the rule or Luba case, it's case law, but anyway, what is the, what is the worst case scenario that could happen under the current zoning if this land were to be developed under the current zoning? And when we change the comprehensive plan and the zoning map, what's the worst case scenario? Not what's the applicant say is going to happen, but what's the potential worst case scenario under the proposed zoning? So that's the analysis that Kittleson went under. They, they needed to make some assumptions. They assumed that the land being annexed into the city, the Putney property, would be zoned low density residential and developed at a density not to exceed six units per acre and that the Putney prop, not the Putney, the Lambert property that's already in the city and is zoned medium density would be developed at 12 units per acre because that's what the code allows. Under the proposed public comprehensive plan designation and public semi-public zoning, looking at the permitted uses that, that are allowed in the P-zone, they determined that the reasonable worst case scenario for the approximate 35 acres to be put into the public zone would be a combined middle school and elementary school with approximately a 72,000 square foot elementary school and a 107,000 square foot middle school. And looking at the traffic generations from those types of developments, they estimate that, that there would be as a, there could be as the result of the rezoning, a potential increase in the daily trips from the site of almost 900 trips per day and in the weekday morning peak hour, it could be almost 1,000 trips increase. And in the weekday PM peak hour, there would actually, could be a decrease from, because the peak, peak PM peak hour from a school is earlier than the four to five PM peak hour on our transportation system. So as a result of that, because of that potential to significantly impact our transportation system, Kittleson has suggested and staff has, is recommending to the council that, that your decision to approve the rezoning include a condition that would impose a cap on the traffic that can be generated from these sites to no more than 3,570 daily trips or 673 morning peak hour trips or 226 afternoon peak hour trips. That is well within what could be expected from what the city envisions we will be developing this property as, which is a stormwater detention basin that will not generate any traffic, although there may be some, some, some athletic fields developed in there. But looking at the whole thing as a site, as a park site, will not be generating that type of, 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 of traffic generation. We have also included in the packet a conceptual design plan for the property to be annexed. This actually is something that was prepared for the city about 10 years ago when the city first became interested in this property. It was part of a grant application from 2008. This is not to imply this is what will be developed, but is conceptually what might, could conceivably happen for the type of development for the community park that is envisioned there. So with that, you've got a revised ordinance, 1014, in front of you that was revised to reflect the new information submitted on the record regarding the traffic and includes a condition of approval in, where did it go? In the, in section 10 of the ordinance on page three that, that imposes that trip cap on these properties. So with that, unless there's other testimony at the hearing tonight, staff believes that the, the record, it should be complete enough for you to take action tonight.
Okay. All right. Oh, where's my cheat sheet? Questions from the council? Oh, Dan, how realistic is that school, I know it's a worst case thing, how realistic is that school proposal?
Well, since, since the city owns the property and the school district has not been in any discussions with us about wanting to buy it from us, it's probably not very realistic, but it, but it is, it is the, it is, when you look at what, considering that, that again, you're looking at the impacts of changing the zoning, not what the owner, the city, may want to be doing with it, it is probably a reasonable interpretation of what could be the worst case. Now you look at the size of those schools.
Yeah.
They're huge.
Yeah.
Compared to, to Stateon schools. So, you know, that would be, you know, maybe 100 years from now when we've doubled in size again and, but.
But that area is realistically, it's the way the community's growing in that direction of north and west.
Yes.
Okay.
But not on this.
So if you're going to put a school.
It can grow.
I wouldn't put it across the bridge in Lynn County. I'd put it out there somewhere. Yeah.
Yeah. At this point, at this point, the, the school district's latest long-range planning forecast indicate there is no need for additional school sites in the North San Am School District.
Just keep putting more of them in a class. Yeah, that's, that works. Okay, any other questions from council? Proponents' testimony? Go ahead, Bill. Mr. Martinak.
Good evening, Mayor, council and staff, public. My name is Bill Martinak and I reside at 15556 Coon Hollow Road Southeast in Stateon, Oregon. I testified at the last hearing and, so I'm glad that you kept that open until tonight. I, I do want to point out that the packet that has, is before you to consider, a portion of it didn't come out until last Friday. I don't know if you got it before I did, but, and then it was modified again today. So, so I would ask that you do hold the record open if you close the hearing tonight, at least hold the record open for seven days so that you give people an opportunity to submit more information based on everything that came out last Friday and then again today.
Okay. Go ahead.
So previously, when the, when the. So, previously, when the, when the first announcement came, I sent some questions concerning the applications to the planning department, and I noticed that earlier tonight, it appears that most of the time, when someone from the public sends things in, and they get printed and sent to the council in the packet, I don't know if that's a rule or a guideline, but in my case, what I sent, the questions that I sent to the planning department, the answers that I received, and then a copy of a letter that I submitted, is not in your packet, at least I didn't see it today. So, I'd like to have the opportunity tonight to submit those questions that I, that I sent to the, to the planning department, the answers that I received, and then there was another, another letter that, and then I have a couple other, just some drawings, part of your, of your master plans, that I'd like to submit tonight. They're just one page each, so that's okay. So, in, in the, in the future, I guess the procedure is just to send everything to the mayor and the council members, along with what I send to the planning department, so that everybody gets it at the same time? Is that what you prefer?
I guess.
I guess, in answering that question, I would make a distinction between asking questions of the planning department that you're looking to have answered, and offering testimony that you want the decision-makers to consider. So, when I received your questions, Bill, I answered them, but because you didn't appear to be offering testimony, but were seeking information, I did not forward them to the decision-makers, because it didn't appear that you were offering any relevant testimony, but were asking questions, looking for information.
Okay. Well, I, I read through the stuff from the previous hearing tonight, and it looked like it was kind of all over the board with people sending drawings and marked-up code sections and all kinds of stuff that got forwarded on to you, so...
Right. That was, that was testimony that they were submitting for consideration, as opposed to going, "Hey, what's going on?"
Okay. All right. Well, anyway, I'll, I'll give you a copy of that tonight, the, the questions that I submitted, and then the answers I got, and then what I have tonight. So, I have, I have a list of things that, if I can find it here.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
Could I address one of the questions that Mr. Martinak had?
Yes.
And that is the flow of information from the public to the council? And in order to maintain the pristine nature of the decision-makers, the process is that material in a land use case needs to go to the planning department. The planning department takes care of disseminating it. If the public sends something directly to the council in a land use matter, it has a tendency to create ex parte contact and could have a bias or predisposition questions that might arise. So, our instruction to the public in all of these cases, that's land use case, if it's not a land use case, it's a different matter, but in a land use case, you have to submit it to the planning department, not to the council or to the mayor.
Okay. I, I noticed tonight that part of what was submitted was addressed directly to the mayor and council, and then there was quite a bit of it that went that way, and then part of it was addressed back to Dan, so I'm just asking, I've seen it both ways, so, just wondering what the preference is there, so, okay. So, anyway, again, I, I would like to see the, the record remain open, just to give everyone time. You've only had not even, not even a day to look at some of the stuff that was there, and just over the weekend, to see, to look at the, the traffic study. And really, I, I read through that, and I'm not really familiar with a trip cap and how you do that. I know that in the past, you know, the city has required a traffic impact analysis down to pretty small developments, and so it seemed like that might be appropriate to study the impact that the park's going to have on the neighboring roads there. And, so, the, the letter that I had submitted back to Dan, which I'd like to make, I'd like to submit that tonight, if I can find it again, just talked about the, the fact that just, just having the application. Anyway, this letter quotes, quotes section 17.12, .170, .5, .d, .5, and then 17.12, 1.1080, .5, .c, .5, which says that it doesn't really matter, it's, it's the fact that there's an application that requires the, the traffic analysis to be done. And so, I, I think you'll look at that based on what Mr. Kittleson gave you, and make a determination on what goes there. However, in the past, you know, according to this letter, you know, an application for comp plan amendment, zoning map, and other activities would be deemed incomplete if they didn't have that. So, that's, and again, I'll give you a copy of that letter.
Can I, can I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Bill, would you take a question?
Sure.
At this point? For show?
Bill, I'm confused. Do you have a problem with this? Is that, I guess I don't understand where you're going with this. Do you have a concern about what we're looking at here?
Are you an opponent or proponent?
I'm a proponent. I just want you to look at the, I just want you to look at the...
Okay. I've looked at it all, and I didn't have any major questions, but when you're talking, I'm starting to think, maybe I missed something. Was I, was, is there something I needed to be looking at that I didn't look at? Because it all looked pretty straightforward to me, and so, it's like, now, now you're confusing me.
Okay. Well, I guess it's similar to what you were talking about earlier tonight, and, and all of the stuff about just asking that you follow, that's really where I'm, where I'm going with this, too.
Okay. Do you think that we're not following the code? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I, I want you to look at those items in, now, before, when there was nothing in the packet about traffic, then, yeah, that's why I wrote and asked, and asked, and I said, "Hey, in the past, you've required this, why aren't you requiring it in this case?" Because, really, it's, it's a little different deal down there with the park...
And now it's in there, so are we missing something else now?
I don't know, because I'm not a, I'm not a traffic planner.
Oh, okay.
I've only had a little short time to read, and you've only had a little short time to read, that, that's why I'm asking...
Yeah, but I, but I read it, I had enough time to read it when it came out.
So, I just think you should look at all of it.
Okay.
There.
Okay. I'm not missing something, then. There's not something here that I might be missing.
Would you like to finish your comments and take questions, or take another one now?
Sure. Oh, anytime.
Mr. Martinak, thank you for pointing out the fact we needed a traffic study last time, and I appreciate that. Is there something else that you believe we're not putting in that we should be, according to the law? We listen to you, and we respect you, and would like to know what your, your idea, what is in your letters that you refer to here?
Well, in the, what I wrote to Dan originally was that what I saw missing, if you go through the checklist on the two applications, one was the traffic analysis, which, you know, you've required from the other major developments in the area. So, I said, "Okay, hey, you know, what are you doing about that?" And then the concept plan, which is another, I mean, it's one of the boxes on your application that says you need to do that if you don't have a concurrent development scenario there. So, that's why I said it's, it's on your application checklist, so shouldn't you be doing it?
We agreed last month when you brought up the traffic study, and we put it there. And Dan, is the comprehensive checklist box checked in your estimation? Is what he's talking about?
I saw...
The record now includes a traffic impact analysis suitable for the purposes of the transportation planning rule, and a concept plan.
So, Bill, is there something else?
Yeah, a couple small, minor things that I wanted to submit. One is that on the, on the application for annexation, there's some boxes to be checked there about how the, how the property's going to be served, and one of, the item for storm sewers was left blank. So, I, there is a, a storm line available, and so I just filled that in, in that, in that box. There is a 30-inch storm line available in, at the corner of Kendall and Junko, which is in place right now. So, I just added that in, where in the past, the storm drain was left blank.
So, it sounds to me like we've fulfilled everything we need to.
Well, that'll be up to you to decide that. Okay. So, anyway, I, I had two other items that I wanted to submit. They're just from your stormwater master plan. One is, is Plan Figure 11, which just shows how this property is to be served under the master plan, and also Stormwater Master Plan Figure 12, which pretty well shows the same drawings as to how the property's to be served. And then, part of, part of the notes that I sent to the planning department, one of the questions that I had was, is this development going to follow the existing master plans for traffic and storm? And the answer was yes, and so I'm, I'm assuming that you'll be following those. So, anyway, that's all I'd like to submit tonight, are those...
Bill, I thought, excuse me, but I thought we, we hit that topic last time, of whether we were following our own master plans.
You did, and, and from what I have in here, it says you are, and so, I'm just, I'm just agreeing with you. That's great. I'm, I'm all for it, and that's why I'm up here as a proponent of the park, because you've told me that you're following the plan, and so, I'm just agreeing that that's a good idea.
Okay.
And so, that's why I'm submitting the, the information that, that I have.
Okay. And Molly, that should go to Dan, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Goes where?
Dan. Mr. Fleischman.
So, the other stuff that was submitted earlier tonight, that came up to you and was passed around, that's, that's not how...
Did not come to us first. It came to the city first, and they, they made copies and gave them to us.
Okay. So, then, Dan will take this and put it in the record and pass it on to all of you?
Right.
Perfect.
Okay. Are there any other, Bill, are you done, sort of?
Other than if there's questions?
Okay. Questions? Anything? Okay.
I, I do just have one, another brief question.
Another question.
In whatever you have there, that you're going to submit to Dan, that we're going to see, and so, it tells us what areas that, that you think maybe we may or may not be following the plan? So, we know where, what we're looking at?
I don't have any idea about that.
What are you submitting, then, if you have no idea? No, I'm asking you to help me here.
Okay. So, in the storm drain part...
What am I supposed to be looking at?
Okay. In the storm drain, there's, there's, there's a little box where it talks about services. Okay. You, in the application, you say, "Okay, there's water here, and it's this size, and there's sewer here, and it's this size." In storm drain, it's blank.
Okay. So, I need to look at it and see if it's addressed? Is that what you're saying? I need to look at the plan and see if that, that issue is addressed?
Because no, no drawings were submitted with the application at all.
I kind of got it now. Okay.
And, and so, I'm submitting a couple of your, your drawings, just so you don't have to search all the way through.
Okay.
I guess I can, I'll, I'll try to address it.
Okay. Thank you.
And Lance, maybe you can, too. We can't, we submitted a, a theoretical plan from 2007. If we ever get to it, there is an agenda item here for the Mill Creek Park project. It's informational. What we're doing, Bill, is going to provide an opportunity for the community and a consultant to come in and actually devise what this is, and so, and what we're going to do with the park, and how it's going to best serve the community, and I guess, I'll take away my chance later on to say, we're looking for people who will be part of that committee, State and residents, who would like to, to engage and to have a say in what we're going to do with that. So, it is kind of hard as a city, as opposed to developer, for us to submit something when it hasn't been done yet, and then we're not following the process we want to follow as a city, which is to allow input from the community on what that will be. I think that's what I can say about that.
Anything else, sir?
I'm, I'm not sure I quite understood. That wasn't a question, I guess.
No. It was a statement.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I'll, I'll give this to Dan, then, and there's no other questions.
That's it. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Okay. Where were we? Opponents' testimony, unless there's another proponent. Anyone else want to speak?
Yes.
Oh, there's one. Okay. Good. Good, good, good.
Hello again. Thank you. I'm Colton. Again, I live 1462 Westfield Court. I grew up in this town, and I, I want to ask first, is the, the annexation, I'm assuming that that's part of, or that's related to the Mill Creek Park project? Okay. So, I just had a chance to look at the binder back there, and I noticed that there is a park plan for that annexation, and there's, is a skate park listed in that plan, which does, can I answer one of my questions? So, I'm very in favor of, I'm proponent for that park idea, especially if you guys are going to do everything that that outlines. As far as the committee, I am totally open to being part of that committee and helping you guys formulate that. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was, there's the wilderness area behind the middle school that we know is the back 40. My concern is that that's been getting cut back quite a bit every year. So, as far as the park plan goes, I want to know, is there any plan to include that as being protected as a wilderness area? And if not, is there going to be something in the future that might be put in place for that?
I'll try to answer those questions, in that, one, this hearing is on the annexation of land into the city limits, that this, land that the city owns and intends to develop as a park, and in changing the comprehensive plan designation from residential to public, and the zoning from various residential zones to the public zone. The land that you're referring to that is owned by the North Saniam School District, not owned by the city of Stateon. The school district is a separate unit of local government, and is, has not controlled by the city. It is up to the school district what happens to their property. Should they want to do anything other than woods back there, then they'll need to go through a land use process, and there'll be public notice and a public hearing.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Well, that answers my question. Like I said, I'm interested in the committee when that happens, but I'm very in favor of a park there.
You got your name. Thanks.
Yep. Be in touch, and we'll be in touch. Okay. Any opponents' testimony, unless somebody else wanted to speak in favor of this?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Marion Barker. I live at 2155 Kendall Way. Next door to me is my favorite neighbor, who is a, a drug house. The traffic that I see now, as opposed to what I know is going to happen with an RV park, I mean, a recreational park, you're going to have softball fields, you're going to have soccer fields, and any time you get baseball or softball teams playing, you're looking at, for one field alone, approximately 60 people. Time you get the players, and the spectators, and their kids. If you look at, right now, Quail Run Park, when they have a baseball game there, the both sides of the street are lined from Kendall to Quail Run, on both sides. When you have a cross-country meet at the middle school, there's cars parked all along Shaft Road and up Kendall Road. Once we get housing, and you have this park, what in the world is going to happen to the traffic? How are we going to... How are we going to get out of there? And I live right in the middle of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are real concerns. And we're going to address those in any proposals we make. I don't, who knows what they're going to look like, but that's one of the factors we've got to address. Any other opponents or proponents testimony? Or can we move on to general testimony? Nothing there? How about questions from the public? Anything? Anything else? There's one.
Hello. My name's David Paddy. I'm at 982 Cooper Court, Stateon, Oregon. I had a question regarding this, actually kind of bringing up an extension off what he just said. Is there a plan to widen that road perhaps? Because I know what he's talking about and there often is a lot of traffic in that area and it's usually parked on his side of the road, on the other road. I would like to see that concern addressed before that lane is allocated for a community park, as was currently on the floor before you.
Okay. So the street you're thinking of, Shaft or Kendall?
It's Kendall Way.
Kendall. Yeah.
I can answer that.
That'll be fine.
It's Lance Studwick, Director of Public Works. We're in the midst of a design for Kendall Way now, widening that to a full Collector Avenue. It probably won't be constructed until this summer, but it will be constructed well ahead of the park. The parks might take two or three, four years to be developed because we have to get grants. The issue tonight is just annexing it so we can go out and do that.
I just wanted to make sure that was a plan. Thank you for bearing with my ignorance.
Any more questions from the public? Questions from council? Anything? Dan, staff summary?
Staff believes that the record is now complete in that a traffic planning rule analysis has been submitted. The findings of the council have been amended to reflect it and Ordinance 1014 has been amended to include a, a condition that any development to be constructed or otherwise developed on the subject properties, so that would be both the Lambert and the Putney properties, shall generate no more than 3,570 daily trips, of which no more can be 573 in the morning peak hour or no more than 226 in the PM peak hour. And that any application for development of the subject properties parenthetically, my parenthetical remark here, which would include the city's development as of a park or a stormwater detention basin, any application for development on the subject properties shall submit an application with the application, a transportation impact analysis or transportation assessment letter that verifies the proposed development will conform to the trip cap limitation stated in the, in the ordinance. So that, that will happen. You've got a revised draft ordinance. You did have a request in the testimony to keep the record open. So with that, that looks like Wally wants to say something, so we'll turn it over to him.
Before we close the, the hearing, you have to deal with the request for a continuance. This is not the first public hearing on this matter. This is a continued public hearing. If it were to be the first public hearing, as we noted early, the statute requires you to continue the hearing. However, the statute says if you are in a continued hearing, it then becomes discretionary to the council whether or not you want to grant the continuance or not. So it's up to you at this point. You're not statutorily compelled to, to grant it. You can grant it if you want or you can deny it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate you being here tonight to help us with this stuff. Let's close the hearing. Unless you want to do? We need to determine how to handle the request for continuance. Because if the vote is for, then you can't.
We have a request for a continuance on the hearing. What would you folks like to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I read the material submitted, so I'm good.
Okay. It's pretty clear to me as well, sir. Okay. So no need for a continuance?
I don't see.
We close the continuance? What would you like to do?
I'll go with the majority.
Go with the majority? Okay. So we're deciding against a continuance? We're moving to close the continuance. Okay. I'll just, I'll just go ahead and close the hearing. I don't need a motion on that. Okay. Counsel delivered deliberation. Counsel deliberation. Anything? Or a decision on, on 1014?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll offer a motion to approve the applications and the first consideration of Ordinance 1014.
Second. All right. A motion and a second to go with option one, approve the application and the first consideration of Ordinance 1014. That's one of six possibilities we were offered here. Any discussion? Alyssa, would you poll the group, please?
Sure. Counselor Uselman?
Yes.
Counselor Cronquist?
Yes.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Quickly?
Yes.
Motion passes. Four to zero.
Four to zero. Okay. All right. And let's see, is this, where's three?
Three.
Three, come here. We have to offer everyone that possibly, the city council's decisions can be appealed to the land use board of appeals in accordance with state law. Okay. That's done. Let's go on. The hour wears upon us. Mr. Ludwig, I think you have the next, the next shot. Mill Creek Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, if you'll bear with me tonight, I'm a little bit under the weather, but I'll try to, I'll try to submit this report or this memo to you. We've been talking about Mill Creek Park all night, it seems like, so this hopefully is not something new to you. The city purchased this property probably a year ago, nine months ago now, and we've been working on trying to come together with a, an RFP to come up with a park master plan for the Mill Creek Park. This memo is a summary of that process. On August 25th, 2017, the city put out an RFP for the master plan designing of Mill Creek Park. We got, we received one RFP from AKS Engineering and Forestry. We have this project broken into two phases. Phase one will be a master plan and that's really what we're after with this project. The master plan of the, the park was going to allow us to go to the Oregon OPRD to look for grants and monies to construct this park. And that is the primary purpose to go forward with this master plan. Phase two will be the land use approvals of those master, of the concept plan. It will go before the, the Planning Commission. It will go follow normal procedures for a development in this community, but that's well in the future. So right now, we're really talking about just hiring a consultant to come up with a master plan and work with the community members and the city council and the Parks and Recreational Board to come up with a master plan that we can take to the OPR, the park district, Oregon Parks District, to obtain funding to build this park. Again, the financial, we met, excuse me, pardon me this evening, I'm a little bit under the weather. So we met with AKS Engineering and Forestry, the deputy city recorder, myself, the planning director, the city administrator, and one of, a member of our Parks and Recreational Board met with AKS Engineering. They discussed their professional background and their experience in, of their project team and they gave us examples of previous parks that they designed. And I've attached the, some of their proposals or their designs that they've done in the, in the past to this memo. After their presentation, the group met and we discussed their proposal and it was a consensus that was formed that we ran with AKS Engineering to move forward with the contract. The financial impact of this to the city, the Mill Creek master planning will be done in two phases. Phase one will just be the master plan. They'll produce renderings. They'll be working with community group that we form. The gentleman out here wants to be on that. We'll be looking for other members of the community as well, other stakeholders of the community that want to enter, join this board to work with AKS Engineering. Will be coming before the city council. I believe two meetings will be going before the Parks Board, one or two meetings as well. Once we come to a consensus on what this park is going to look like, they'll be preparing final renderings so we can use those to go before the Oregon State Parks and Recreational District to apply for one of their large grant funds, our large fund grants. Phase two will be again land use and construction projects, preparing construction plans for this park, but that's going to be well into the future. The initial cost of the master plan will be $29,861. Phase two is, has been broken up. They suggested we break that up into two phases, 2A and 2B. 2A is really the land use approval phase and that phase is, proposed cost for that is $51,680. That, of course, will be negotiated once we start and we know what we're going to build. That could go down, more than likely it will go down. Phase 2B, 2B will be preparing construction plans, drawings and specs based off those preliminary plans. I do not have a price for that. Those prices will be, excuse me, those prices, the cost of those, that phase will be negotiated once we know what those conditions of approval are for that park. That's generally the way it works in development and that's the way we're going to have it work with this park. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have regarding this RFP.
Looks good. Yeah.
Thank you.
If I didn't say anything else, thank you for that. From, from the RFP, these, these folks have done a lot of park planning and maybe park building. Are they?
They're a full service, one of the reasons I prefer, I like them is they're a full service consulting firm. I mean, we have wetlands on the site perhaps, they've got a wetland scientist on staff, they've got engineers on staff, they've got forestry engineering on staff, they've got planners, surveyors. I mean, it's a full service consulting firm. Which helps with timing, meeting timelines as well as cost. So that's one of the reasons we decided to go with that.
Thank you. We don't have any staff or commission reports tonight. Comments, presentations from the public. One last shot here. Nothing? Business from the city administrator?
I have nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay. Business from me. Old slow motion here, finally got around to getting a, a counselor. We won't, we won't see him for another couple of weeks because he's off to Disneyland with his kids today. He won't be on board realistically till the first of the year, but we've got somebody. I had seven applications and I narrowed it down to two that I thought were just exceptional. Need to see that many people wanting to be part of this and willing to put in the time and effort to be part of it. And I showed the council that I, two weeks ago, I announced that, that they could help out in this if they wanted. And so three of the counselors and myself looked at these last two applicants and I asked them to pick the one they favored. And they did and it come down three to one to a Chris Mullen. And I don't have any further information about him tonight. I can get some to anybody that wants to see it, any of the group that hasn't already. Priscilla? Sorry. Unless you didn't get to see those letters, I'm not sure you did.
I did see the letters.
Okay.
So who, who are the three city council people that were involved in this?
I'm sorry?
Did you say there's three city council people involved in this?
Yeah. One, two, three.
Huh?
One, two, three. Four.
The city was with the mayor, we all got to see the letters.
I saw the letters. Were we supposed to go down?
If I didn't, if I didn't call you and ask which of those two you liked the best, I apologize.
Okay. I didn't.
We were at another meeting.
Excellent, excellent choices though. We wouldn't have gone wrong with either one of them. So I felt, I felt good about it and I think Chris will be a real addition to the council, kind of a new voice and it'll, it'll be interesting. He works for the state treasurer in, in charge of information technology at the state treasury. So, okay. Mr. Mayor? Business from the council. Is it your intent to appoint him tonight? Oh, I'd like to with the concurrence of the council. Yeah. I think it's a two-step process. You need to announce that that is your appointment to fill the vacancy, followed by a motion for consent from the council. Okay. All right. That is my, that's my appointment.
I move we consent to the mayor's appointment.
Thank you. Is there a second? Or do we need one?
Yes.
It's a regular motion. Thank you, Joe. Motion and a second to consent to my appointment, our appointment of Chris Mullen to the state and city council. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't think Counsel Gladwell had a fair say in what was going to take place. You asked us to call the candidates on Friday of last week to consider it over the weekend and I don't think Counsel Gladwell was included in that.
Well, I asked two weeks ago if people want to be part of that.
I don't want to speak for Counsel Gladwell, I just think that it should have been inclusive of all the council.
Well, it needed to be and I just apologize for not having her more involved in it.
So we have to consent to the mayor's decision.
Motion and a second. Let's go, let's go ahead and vote on that. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. I owe you one somewhere.
I don't need any more from you.
How about business from the council? Anything? Future agenda items, city attorney award of contract, a teen center and board and committee appointments. So we're done. Thank you.
That was quick.
[inaudible][472.47]